April second, two thousand twenty four quarter. Uh, Mr. Moody, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Thank you. Dear followers, thank you to our freedom lord who we have in you and the freedom we have in this country. Thank you for these children here that are here today, Lord, and who entrusted our character, Lord. Thank you for letting us be a part of their lives and their safety and education, Lord. This has been the best ministers we've ever been for them. I'm going to be the board today, Lord, as the seasons they bend and affects the school. I'm going to give them guidance and wisdom. And Lord, we're being rest of our teachers and our staff and our principal, Lord, and all who work here. They all have a special place, but only your heart, the Lord, have a special place in this school system. We thank you for that. Thank you for going down and watching what you do with us. Just another great day.
Amen. All right, let the children come in. Ms. Tracy. Come on in, boys and girls. Where?
Three classrooms.
Three classrooms, school. Is this, is this kindergarten or first grade? Preschool, okay. Come in. Yeah, keep, you can even walk up in front here. That'd be good. Look at the children. Wow. I used to be that little. Wow, that's like a long time ago. Oh, they're still playing. Y'all, y'all can come, y'all can come up here. Come on up here. That's okay. Just go all the way across over there. They're fine. Wow.
This is a feature of our school system here.
I'm not gonna do what I usually do. Because there's so many of you, but we're glad to have you. Now, uh, Ms., I, Birchfield, I, I know that that's Tracy Duke, the mayor. She, another former student of mine. We have, uh, preschool, how many classes?
Three.
Three classes.
We've got Miss Burgles' class, Miss Thatcher's class, and Miss Wiggins' class.
Ah, Miss Thatcher, another former student. There you go. All right, another one. All right, you know you're getting old when half the room is former students. All right, you all are gonna do the pledge for us, okay? Well, we're gonna let you do that right now. Go ahead.
Attention, salute, pledge. Let it be true. I am a citizen of the United States of America. And to the great nation, we are grateful. We are nation, under God, in this school, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, thank you. Some of you are going to go out that way and others are going out that way, that's fine. As chairman, I have the duty to read this letter to everyone, especially the board. It says, Dear Graham County School Board Members, and this is dated March twenty seventh of this year. I regret to inform you that I am resigning my position as school board member effective immediately due to unforeseen health issues in both myself and in my husband's bodies. We need to focus on getting well and running our business right now. It was my honor to serve alongside all of you. I thank you for your commitments to the children of Graham County. Sincerely, and it's signed, Deborah Hank Denchel, Graham County Board of Education. I need a motion to accept this resignation. Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, uh, I need a motion to approve the agenda. Hold it back up. Uh, I also need to, um, amend the agenda on I, letter I, AI and surveys which Hank was going to present. Uh, since she's not here, we have to amend the agenda and eliminate this. Do I have a motion to amend agenda, uh, eliminating the letter I?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Now, do I have a motion to approve the agenda today as read? Motion. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Now I need an approval of February sixth, two thousand twenty four meeting and the March fifth, two thousand twenty four meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those? So, do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Now, uh, Ms. Klein, do we have anybody signed up for public economy?
No.
Thank you very much. Okay, reports and discussion items. Okay, leadership team updates. Uh, I'll just start with the high school, Mr. Matheson.
Good morning. So I've just got a few things. Uh, our teachers at the high school have all one hundred percent completed the teacher working condition survey. Uh, the, uh, students that we had on the, uh, class trip, the junior senior trip for Washington, New York, they arrived back safely on Sunday afternoon, had a good trip. Uh, this week, we'll be sending a group of students to the state host competition. That's Wednesday through Saturday, so they'll be leaving at six o'clock tomorrow morning. Hopefully, we'll have some students come back maybe with, uh, some, as some state of champions. And, uh, we'll be meeting with our seniors regarding graduation and baccalaureate. And, uh, we also have cap and gown pictures at the high school on April the sixteenth. And athletics, baseball, softball, track, and golf, all of our sports teams this spring are doing extremely well. Our baseball team's got, I think it's the best start they've had in many, many years. So very proud of all those student athletes. Uh, news from the guidance office. The local scholarship packet was given, has been available now for several weeks for the seniors. Uh, I do want to make the world aware because I know sometimes people come back and say, well, my child didn't get that or didn't turn something in, didn't have a chance. We have had fewer seniors pick up local packets than we've ever had. So thank Miss Daniel, since she has given out about eighteen local scholarship packets. And, uh, that's also been the case with many of our other scholarships. Students have just not taken the time to apply, and many of them have now passed. So that's very worrisome, uh, to me because I know those kids need the money to go on to college. So parents that are listening and hear this, they have until Friday to get the local scholarship packet completed and back into the high school. Uh, we will be having senior celebration that, and that's like their commitment day where they announce where they're going to go to school. They're going into the military, that's on May the second. And I'd invite the board to come down and be part of that celebration. It kicks off about ten o'clock, and we have certain seniors lunch, and it's outside, the weather's good. And it's just a really good time with the seniors. And, uh, then we have Tri County will be coming in to do registration for classes next fall on April the fifteenth. So juniors and seniors for next year, we sign up to take community college courses. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Matheson. Ms. Wallace?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a few things from the middle school. We've just completed our last check test, which was the last one for the year. And so now we're starting to prepare for EOG. Uh, our eighth graders left yesterday morning, and they were supposed to leave at five. I think they got gone about six thirty, but they made it safely to the coast last night with a few stops in between. And, uh, so they've got a great week planned. Uh, and our baseball softball team still continue to do really well. I think our, uh, girls may have lost one game, I think.
Boys lost one game.
They've lost, they're, the boys have lost one game, yes. And our track team, uh, they're, they're just breaking records every meet. Yesterday, they had, uh, very few kids at the meet, uh, because they're on the eighth grade trip. But Chloe Adams broke three school records in the triple jump, the long jump, and the two hundred meters. Uh, the last track meet, we had, uh, several boys that also broke some, uh, the records. We had, uh, Colton McCoy broke the triple jump. We had a team break the four by eight replay. We had Eli Lambert broke the school record for the one ten hurdles. And Samuel Watcha broke the school record for the sixteen hundred meter. So our middle school, uh, right now, we are loaded with athletes and they're doing really well. And so, uh, also want to apologize that none of my teachers are here today. Uh, we are on a short, have a short staff this week since we have several of our teachers down on the eighth grade trio. So, uh, they, it was hard for us to make it work out for them to be here, so thank you.
I want to mention that Chloe Adams set those school records, those three records after breaking her ankle.
Absolutely. Yes.
Incredible. Ms. Hoop?
Yes, um, at the elementary school, we have kindergarten registration coming on April nineteenth. And so for anyone listening also, if your child turns five by August thirty first, they qualify for kindergarten for this upcoming school year. And, uh, we have a list of things that we put out on social media, on our Facebook page and in other ways that tells you all the things that you need for kindergarten registration. If those things aren't complete by the registration date, but you still plan to enroll the child, I want everyone listening to know that it's very important. They come on down and fill out that enrollment paperwork, and they could give us the rest of the forms later. Because as the board knows, it's very important that we know how many kindergarteners to plan for. Because of that class size law, if I have eighty nine kindergartners, I have five classrooms. And if I have ninety kindergartners, I have to have six classrooms. So if, if, you know, just listening, people listening, if you know that you're going to enroll your child but don't have all the required paperwork, please still come and enroll, and we can, you could get the required paperwork to us later. So anyway, that is on the nineteenth. Uh, we have our EOG Academy that's starting after school, and it runs April the fifteenth through May tenth. And this is for third, fourth, and fifth graders. It's almost like a EOG prep time where students can come, uh, and just get extra practice. Uh, it goes along with that idea as a man thinks, so is he. So we want our kids to feel as prepared as they possibly can be and that they're ready for the test. So this is a way of being proactive with kids before the test. They get tickets for attending EOG Academy. They get a ticket for being president on test day. They get a ticket if they meet their state projections for growth. They get tickets if they score threes, fours, or fives on the EOG. So every student has a chance to get tickets into a drawing. And we're drawing for, we have two, one for a boy, one for a girl in each grade three through six. The Xbox S or Z or twelve, I don't know, starter kit. That's what we have in the, as our prize. So, you know, it's just a little incentive, but it's just something that we want to do for them so that they can feel as prepared as possible. And every child, even if you make a point, but you came, you prepared, you've met your state projections, you have as much a chance to win as anybody else. It's all about that effort and prayer. Also, uh, as of right now, we have moving up to big school for our preschoolers, um, scheduled for Thursday, May second. And, uh, on April twenty seventh, the United Community Bank is coming to do a financial literacy presentation for our fourth grade in the auditorium. So, and we're just getting ready for the end of the year.
Thank you. Ms. Christie, do you have anything for us?
Yes, just a couple of things. Uh, I want to announce that, uh, for anyone listening, we have preschool applications. We are still accepting preschool applications. You can turn those in or come by and get a application here at the central office, uh, with Ms. Lacy or, or myself. Uh, also, I want to invite everyone to Special Olympics in Jackson County. To go around, he has a, just a, we, we're back here this year. We've got several counties, uh, attended over there on April the twenty sixth, and he started at ten o'clock.
Ms. Wiggins?
Good morning. Um, I'm sent here to share a review. This is something that you're familiar with, that we try to couple and share with you. Uh, the only other announcement that I have to make is that we are in negotiations with an entity right now uh, to, um, begin, um, um, trying to, um, implement our school-based health center. Uh, where it is fully functioning five days a week. So that's sort of in our negotiations, and we anticipate having a meeting, uh, right after spring break.
Thank you. All right, there's so many people in here. I, I don't know who's back there. So raise your hand if you need to speak. Ms. Parker, thank you.
For after school, um, we have met third installment requirements this year. So I submitted paperwork for that, so hoping to get that money in within the next few weeks. We'll start planning a big full summer. Um, our program administrator is going to be making a stop visit on April twenty fifth, so we're preparing for that. And then lastly, we are applying, we're, we're in the process for applying for the new grant. Um, this is due April twenty third, but we won't know if we receive it until.
Thank you. Anyone else that I missed before I go on to the next? Mr. White, you're on the agenda somewhere. Okay. All right, staff info, Ms. White.
Yes, can I use the podium?
Sure.
It rolls. So I will just say that I really am a nurse rec this morning, and it's not so much that I just have to speak. It's that I really represent all these teachers that are sitting in here and all the ones that are in the classrooms or watching kids around the coast trip right now. And to me, that is just so important. So I'm gonna try to get through this without my nerves coming through. So, good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the board again. The last time we worked together, I only had three minutes. And my husband and Mr. Matheson can tell you that even when I talk fast, I usually have more to say than I can get through in three minutes. My husband probably doesn't. I don't want to take up a lot of your time today, but I would like to share with you some information that I've gathered over the last few weeks. I have met with staff members from all three schools, gathered information through Google Forms, surveys, emails, texts, messenger, and personal conversations. Not only have we discussed the resource, the school resource officer issue, we have also focused on the positive aspects of our school system and discuss concerns we have in our specific schools and in general with Graham County schools. Anytime you ask for information from that many people, you will get many different viewpoints and opinions. But I have found that most staff agree on these positives. Graham County Schools is blessed with teachers and staff who want to help students succeed. Most people go above and beyond their job expectations to make sure students are safe, loved, and educated. The majority of staff work hard to build relationships with students. I would say most kids have at least one adult they feel connected with at school, and several others have several people that they feel connected with. Overall, we have great students. For the most part, they are respectful and willing to participate in class. Even though we are a small system, we are able to offer numerous clubs, sports, activities, and field trips for the students to participate in. Our juniors and seniors just returned from a trip to DC and New York. Our eighth grade, our eighth graders are currently on the coast trip. The fifth grade will soon be traveling to Charleston. We have baseball, softball track, golf, and winter guard going on right now. There's a trip to Dollywood planned tomorrow and host a state competition later this week. We have one student who placed at the regional math competition and will compete at the state level later this month. We will soon have a ceremony to present rings to our wrestling team for winning the first individual state team title. Zoe Schuler has already won a couple of state titles this year in track, is ranked sixth in the nation in long jump, triple jump, excuse me, and is poised to bring home some more medals at the state meet next month. I wanted to share these things with you because I do believe I teach in the best system in the state. But as any good teacher will tell you, there is always room for improvement, and our system is no different. All of the positive things I have just shared were made possible because we have professionals who invest in time and effort into helping our young people develop their talents both academically and athletically. Our teachers are the backbone of Graham County schools. Which brings me to one of the biggest concerns we have as a staff, that our voices need to be heard. Teachers are entrusted with the safety and well-being of our students every day, but we feel as if our opinions do not matter on issues that will affect all of us. Over the last few weeks, I have found that most staff at both campuses feel supported by our school resource officers. Based upon a survey that I conducted of staff members, the ones that answered, currently eighty-eight percent of them want to keep the school resource officers in under the school umbrella, and twelve percent think they should be in under the sheriff's office. A few people have shared with me that they would like to have more information on the pros and cons of each before a decision is made. Do you know what, do you want to know how I know all of this? It's because I asked them. Not one person I spoke to was happy about how this issue was just dropped at a meeting with no prior knowledge by the staff. As I mentioned at the public meeting when I spoke, teachers are the first line of defense in keeping our kids safe. We want to be informed so we can make good decisions. Which brings me to the next con, my next concern, lack of communication. We want to feel respected and valued for the work that we do. We want our voices to be heard and our opinion, our opinions to mount. Everyone that I've spoken to over the last few weeks has been so appreciative that I've just asked them what they thought. I'm just sorry I've not done it sooner. We're professionals, trust us and treat us as such. Another concern that was brought to my attention was that some board members have personal agendas that drive their decisions. Let me be clear, the North Carolina Teaching Code of Ethics holds me and every teacher in here to a high level of professionalism inside and outside of the classroom. Everyone on this board and in this system should be held to the same standards. Every decision that is made should be for the benefit of all students and all staff every time. Anything less is unacceptable and unprofessional. Not only are our teachers concerned about the SRO decision, we are also extremely concerned about the hiring process for our next superintendent. And I hope I don't probably not talk about you later. The decision this board will make will shape our system for the next ten to twenty years. Depending upon who applies and who is hired, there will be ripple effects throughout the administration and staff potentially at every school. Because we have two board members who have family that could be affected by this decision, I recommend a committee be formed of every teacher from every school, two board members, and two other staff members for the hiring process. It is so imperative that teachers have a voice in this decision. After all, I mean, Mr. Matheson says, I'm gonna die in the classroom, so the majority of us will still be here long after this decision is made. You trust us with students every day, trust us to help make this decision. These are only a few of the positives and concerns that I've gathered recently. I have pages of information for my teachers. My goal is to form a teacher leader committee that can meet with administration throughout the year to increase communication and help address more of our concerns. Our voices must be heard. An amazing teacher is hard to find and impossible to forget. I bet right now I can ask anyone in this room who their third grade teacher was, and they can tell me. Let's not downplay the role we as educators serve in our community. Right now, the community's perception of us is based upon what is being played out in our board meetings. Not how hard our teachers are working, not how early some people get to school to prepare lesson plans, not how late they stay to get stuff done, not how a teacher comforted a student yesterday because they pressed it. Not how a teacher made sure someone had socks or shoes or clean clothes or money for a field trip. We have hardworking, dedicated professionals. Give us a seat at the table where decisions are made. All we want is to feel like our opinions are valued and our work is appreciated. I plan to request a meeting with Ms. Knight, Mr. Moody, Ms. Hooper, Ms. Wash, and Mr. Matheson to discuss the information that I've gathered from staff members and discuss the teacher leadership team. I would love to have the opportunity to sit down with you as a board after we form our team to discuss issues relevant to education. As a system, our main goal is to provide a quality education to every student. Let us help our system get to the place where parents are saying, I don't want my kids to miss what's happening at Graham County schools. I firmly believe that teachers' influence can change lives. For some of our students, we are the only hope they have. Let's all work together, not against each other, for the benefit of our students. Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of our staff today. I truly love Graham County schools and pray we can all return to having a heart for children. And I'll go by asking if you have any questions or comments?
I just want to applaud.
But I, I do want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity. And as you can see, we work hard and we love kids, and, and we just, like I said, want to have a seat at the table. So if you have any questions, I, I don't care at any time, except for what I teach, to sit down with you guys and, and discuss this further, and if you have questions and clarify. Because after I meet with the administration, I want to go back to my teachers and clarify some of the things that, some of the questions that they have and some of the concerns.
That's why I agree with you on communication. Hundred percent. Three, five, and three, four minutes on the way out to the thing. And you had in there about the superintendent. You know, back to that there.
Yes.
So you have what you, what you, exactly.
So my recommendation would be for the board not to be the hiring committee. Um, I recommend that we make a superintendent hiring committee from two to, or from a teacher from every school, from two board members, and then from two other staff members within the system to do the interviews and then make a recommendation to the board. And if I'm not mistaken, did you, when you were hired, was it not a, a community of teachers?
I'm happy to, and board members, I haven't introduced myself to anybody else. I did to you individually, so I'll just say good morning to the entire board. I'm John Hitting with Camden Chatley, uh, in Asheville. Um, as some of you may know, we represent, uh, I think full-time is nineteen school boards in Western North Carolina. They're full-time clients, and you've been a special client to us over the years, all occasioned. So, uh, it's a pleasure to be here. I've, uh, came over, I'm freshly jangled from riding down Needmore Road because I came from my folks' house in Franklin. I've been lucky enough to be the, uh, the town attorney in Franklin for years, and their meeting was last night, yours was this morning. So I was a lucky guy, I got to come on over and see parts of, uh, of the area that I hadn't seen in a while, including Needmore. The name still fits. So it's a pleasure to be here with you. I, I, what I will say in respect, and I think you have a big long one off, because Ms. Knight, as I understand it, your intent is to retire some, some months from now. Okay, I thought you were until I won, okay. But then you have a shorter period of time to think about it. Um, there are different ways to have a search, uh, committee. We offer the service of helping the board find its next superintendent. Um, we, uh, they're the school boards association. I know you've had some of them, they're finding folks, we work and we love with them all the time. We're here to talk with you all. I don't know if you, uh, you know, plumbed them at all about what their thoughts are on searches, but they have certain services as well. At the end of the day, legally, the election of a superintendent is the board's to make. I mean, that's, that's statutory. Uh, how do you get there and how much input other stakeholders have can vary. I think it's an excellent idea to factor in what all, and, and absolutely, that's why you're absolutely right. Your, your teacher community and your, and your parent community and your, just the leadership community in general, all have an interest in it. There are effective ways to get at that. Um, there are effective ways to get at, at that, that don't have you directly making a hiring decision, which you really can ultimately. I mean, it does have to be, it does have to be.
Yes.
Correct. It does have to be a vote of the board at the end of the day. It is going to be theirs to ultimately weigh out who they're going to select. But, um, there are many ways we've found that, that, um, you know, teachers and, and parents, uh, are the most important. I think that weigh into what kind of qualities they're looking for. And you, there's, there's effective surveying tools and I'm glad to hear you, that's, that's a great way to do it. Try to get, get the touch base with everybody. There are tools that will give the board kind of a profile of what they ought to be looking for. And so that when they do make that selection, it does have to be theirs ultimately, but they can do it saying, we did listen, we're, this is a feedback process. We want everybody at the table to feel like we were, have taken all they need into account and, and factored it in with our ultimate and hiring decision. That's something we'd be happy to help out, uh, as we go through that process.
And, and.
It's why you said, uh, teacher from each school, two board members and what?
It's two other staff members.
Two other staff members. Do you mean staff members, do you mean here at the central office or?
That's why I said staff members. So I, I did not have like a recommendation on specifically where they should come from.
I mean, that could be principals or where.
Can I just say that, that's why I did get in touch with Mr. Nelson, uh, Mr. Nelson, uh, about Sam Thorpe. He is down at the North Carolina School Board Association about getting in touch with him. Uh, Mr. Nelson, we did talk about that.
Yes.
Did you call to him?
No, I did not because I did not have a board approval to do that. So I, I can't.
For the, is that for the hiring process?
With the hiring process. I have people in the community want to know how they can have input. And this is something I would like, um, and I think it's important. I mean, our teachers, our parents, you know, because I've had people come to me and say, hey, get ready to hire. Because I think they know ultimately it's the board's decision to interview and, and so. But I think definitely there needs to be input from, and how we get there, I don't know.
And can I just suggest to you that, um, you know, this is, I don't know how many times I've had this discussion with the board in my, you know, some of my twenty-nine years doing this, uh, this line of work. Um, I'm happy to, we, we very often have, have pulled together what our proposal would look like, what the School Boards Association's proposal would look like. I'm happy to put those together for you so you can see them and, and see through what, what kind of process you want to design. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, there isn't any hard fast way to do it. There are lots of different ways to get there. At the end, you do have to have the board make that decision. Um, there can be complications if you're going to have, uh, especially community members. Uh, it's, it's very difficult to have community members actually review candidates because they, the personnel file statutes that make their information confidential apply at the minute of that, uh, application. So that's got, there's got to be kind of a black box around that. Um, but again, I think you'd see in both of our proposals and any other way that we can kind of fly alongside and help you design your own process, there are ways to, to get that, that sort of stakeholder input. So I think.
We have to come up with a vacancy announcement, correct?
Well, you do need to announce your vacancy, yes. And, and I think the, you know, it's already April somehow or another.
Yeah, so we're ready. I've signed my final papers today. So there's no reason that the board can go ahead. They have already put out to the statutes for your information that it will be an internal post. So that information has already gone out to the staff.
So whether we have a working session or, or meet early, of course, working, all of our working sessions are open to anybody, publicly. So I don't know how to, those are all we have.
So, so I'm trying to getting, looking at the timeline because ultimately my, my concern is that given the timeline and the fact that we've already moved some, um, that you're going to ultimately be taking principals potentially out of schools, other people to do all those vacancies from the, from the teacher ranks. And then we're going to leave you the problem that we have without any vacancies already, uh, in, in the upper administration is there's, there's teacher shortages. So I really, you know, want to impress on the board that the sooner the better because I want you to fill your teacher vacancies as soon as possible. So you'll get the best opportunity for candidates to be in the classrooms. So if it's going to be internal vacancy, at least you're taking out the, you know, the nationwide search, all that. So I mean, I guess your timeline can be a little bit shorter maybe. So, um, I, I'll just impress on the board soon.
So then we need to, to give Mr. Nelson the, I mean, he needs to go ahead and say, this is what we got to do, correct? And give it to people, get with you or get with.
And, and I do take your point, Ms. Knight, I think time is of, it gets to be of the essence when you're, um, if you knew, I've had clients, um, that know that they don't need to do, uh, any kind of even regional search. We don't necessarily recommend a nationwide search, uh, you know, mountain farms need mountain farms to lead them and, and, you know, to get somebody from way off and have them try to adjust culture and stuff. I'm not saying nobody can do it, but, um, you know, that could shorten your timeline substantially. Um, I do, I, I think that the board needs to come around whatever process you're going to use. And I don't think waiting until May seventh is a good idea. So I think pulling together, I would, the best I can, can suggest to you is to pull together the most information you can, including what kind of searches are available. If you're going to say as a board, we don't need to do that, we're going to post internally, we feel good that we've got a good local candidate, then, you know, the board can decide that, I think you all want to think about a special meeting between now and then, uh, before May seventh, so you can say, here's what we're doing and we're going to, here's kind of a timeline to do it. And again, we can help you kind of navigate that to design it.
And at that time, can we have teachers coming in and be part of that? I mean, are you, would you be in agreement with having the committee like she is saying and leaving some board members out?
I don't know that I'd leave any board members out. Um, I think it's, it's, um, you know, again, it's, uh, everybody who's a seated board member right now is going to have to vote on it. Um, so I think they're going to need, all need to have, have input on it. I don't know that I've ever been a part, excuse me, of any process that didn't ultimately have the full board in closed session interviewing a candidate or two. Even if you knew you've got the heir apparent who's going to step in the role, you still ought to interview them because your public ought to know that you at least, you know, you, you tested them out on what you think that the skill system needs and then gave them a thorough interview. Um, let me do some work on how much, and what way to involve teachers in the, in a correct interview sort of.
Just involve, I mean, I would like staff input, staff input, don't you, it's, I mean, staff, just staff input, even, even if it, even if it wasn't. I have staff input. I think that's very important instead of just us making a decision.
Right. Well, as I say, what I've seen, the way I've seen that work is to have, um, you know, you can get your entire staffs in, but by giving them the opportunity to weigh in on a poll and it sounds like you did a great job, that's why you're trying to test the pulse that way. Gives you a list of qualities that every, you know, everybody's looking for. And then as you interview, you can think through who best fits all of these, be able to look at them and, you know, your whole, whole community staff and students and parents and, and community can say, we found out what everybody wanted, we did our best to find that here and we think this is our candidate here to rock. Um, so again, I, I don't want to delay you much if you shouldn't delay much. But I think we should think about and call a meeting between now and, and May seventh sometime again to let me gather that information so you can just compare it all.
Would it be appropriate to go ahead and get out, at least something to the staff about the qualities that you feel like is important in a new superintendent, this is what we wish that the, the board would look for. These are things that are important to us in a superintendent. And that way you got that coming into the next meeting. At, at least, these are the, you know, here's our report from what we wish you would consider.
We may have a Survey Monkey type survey that I could just send you and you can tool, tool around a little bit and start sending out. So let me look into that.
Okay. And then that's why I alluded to the fact that this decisions could affect a couple of students.
I mean, you're in a small system, you know, you're in a small system. That's why my recommendation towards how the committee made up, like I said.
So another thought to, as we go through this is with your new board member coming on, there is, I guess, a possibility with, with how that's going to play out that you'll, we need to accept that new board member too between now and the May meeting. So that would be a reason to have a, a meeting?
I think so. There may well be, and I do, I need a little bit more time. I've only been looking at it since yesterday, but, um, the, the picture as to how you get your fifth board member is a little unclear. Um, state law says that if you have a partisan elected board, then the person or body or committee that is, or commission, I think it says, that it's named in your local act to be the one that names that other board member is, want to do it within thirty days. Your local act doesn't name such a person, doesn't speak to asylum on filling vacancies. So how we resolve that, I'm not entirely sure right now.
Yeah, but executive, Republican Executive Committee Chairperson sitting in the back of the room too. So maybe add four jobs to it.
But we're not partisan, but.
Yeah. I think they've been one of the first in the state. As I was researching that, it was a nineteen seventy-nine local act that made this board partisan. I don't, I didn't see anything since then shed any more light on it, so.
It could have been that they improved their language if I had since then.
Yeah.
So it probably needs to be cleared up more.
Yes, ma'am. And it references chapter one sixty-three a lot, which is sort of the general voting having new elections. It's the one that creates the eight more elections and all our local wards of election. I don't, it helps us with vacancies though, but it doesn't, none of those, I'm working on it because those chapters, it was, that was two chapters have been moved around a lot by the general seventy since, since then and just in recent couple of years. So we've got a, got some sort now, believe, about how that fifth member is going to put on.
Has, has anybody applied for the superintendents? Oh, oh, I thought you said you, you'd apply in term, okay.
Yeah, I'll show you in the last board meeting that you would have an internal vacancy.
We have to see the post.
You have to, the post is not put out yet.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hitting. Field trip request. Thank you, Ms. White.
Each new people that attend your class.
You don't have one. Uh, Ms. Walsh, do you have a field trip request? Ms. Hooper, do you have a field trip?
Yes, I have two. Um, we'll start with the most imminent one. Um, we've talked about it last month and we've talked about it several different times, but I don't trust for sure that we've ever went through the formal process of approval and we're leaving tomorrow. So this is the Charleston trip. April third through the fifth, we leave from the Old Rock Gym at seven o'clock in the morning. Our kids will be going to Patriot's Point to see the battleship and the submarine, the historic market, having a CTE dinner. Uh, day two, they're going to go to Magnolia Plantations, spend some time at the beach and then do a riverboat cruise. And then on day three, we'll see Fort Sumter and then we'll head home. We usually arrive home somewhere around eight thirty, nine o'clock. I twenty-six traffic really determines a lot of that. Um, so we have thirty-five travelers and of those thirty-five travelers, seven adults. So we're very well shadowed around, um, and we've already had our parent meetings. We've got all the consent and everything, but evidently not just that final in the book proof. And the second trip is, um, third grade going to Young Harris, um, the Rollins Observatory on, to watch a magic treehouse space mission video. This is in the planetary in Young Harris, Georgia, April twenty-fourth. Um, they'll leave around eleven-thirty and about the time school gets out and they do then Georgia. Those are my two.
Do I have a motion to, uh, approve the Charleston trip? Uh, April third through the fifth for the elementary school, thirty-five students, seven adults. Do I have a motion to approve that trip?
I'll make a motion to approve the third grade trip.
Do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the third grade trip to Young Harris, Georgia on April twenty-fourth? So I'm, do I have a say? Say it. All in favor? Any opposed? Are there any other field trip requests?
Since we're leaving tomorrow, I really appreciate it.
All right. Budget amendments, Mr. Green.
Okay, I've provided you with a couple of documents here that the state will get. The first documents I'll hold will be the, uh, school budgets. I'll try to get through these quickly. First page there, budget amendments to the state public school fund. First section is PRC oh oh one classroom teachers. There's a reduction there of seventy-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. That's a combination of, uh, apartment struc- public construction, uh, with their form is looking at average daily attendance and also being able to fund charter books across the state. So that's a combination, uh, multiple, uh, budget revisions that we receive. Uh, the important thing about this, it looks like a lot of money and it is, but PRC oh oh one is paid by number of positions, so the number of positions has not been lost. Okay? So regardless of those people that are paid our PRC oh oh one, those salaries will be paid and honored regardless if they go over our budget amount, it's by position. Second section is PRC oh oh three, we received, which is non-instructional support. We received a reduction there of three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. And that will be subtracted from the substitute budget code. Next section is PRC fifteen, the school technology fund. We receive an additional fourteen thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and plan to use that for supply of materials. Next section down is PRC twenty-nine, behavioral support. Uh, this allotment comes to us, uh, later in the year. This is the allotment for the entire year, sixty-three thousand dollars. And that, uh, PRC twenty-nine, behavioral support, we have one position that pays for an E C teacher salary benefits at elementary school. Next section down is PRC one thirty-one, other textbooks. Additional revenue there is seventy-nine thousand, that's the twenty-five dollars and seven cents. And of course, we'll use that for textbooks. Next page is your budget amendments to the state public school fund as well. First section there is PRC fifty-six, transportation of pupils. Additional allot there of three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars, plan to use that for, uh, gas and electricity. Next section is PRC seventy-three, school technique, uh, school connectivity. We received an additional, uh, three thousand dollars there and, uh, plan to use that for our telephone bills. Next section is PRC seventy-eight, digital learning. We received an additional six thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and plan to use that for computer software supplies. Next section is PRC eighty-three, these are CTE, uh, credential program, uh, allotments. Uh, the amount there is nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. And of course, we're going to use that for the CTE credentials. The last section on this page is PRC eighty-five, this is literacy intervention. The allotment there for the school year is twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And that's for, uh, mostly students paying for, uh, folks that are participating in the letters program at the elementary school. Next page, this is also budget, uh, budget members for the state public school fund. First section there is PRC, uh, fourteen, which is a CTE, uh, vocational program. Uh, we received a reduction of thirty-nine dollars there, we're going to subtract that from supply of materials. Next section is PRC fifteen, which is school technology fund. We received a reduction there of six hundred and thirty dollars and plan to subtract that for our supply of materials. Next section down is PRC sixty-one, there's a reduction there of, uh, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and that's part of the initial budget amount that I, I spoke about. We have, uh, adjustments because of average daily attendance and the health fund charter schools. So that four hundred and sixty-one dollars will be, uh, taken out of the individual schools. Uh, supply of materials allot based on the form that we've used for years. Next section is PRC eighty-seven, stock arm enhancement fund. Uh, these funds have been, uh, carved out of the transportation budget. Uh, it's six thousand dollars and will be used, plan to use that for stock arm. It's six thousand dollars and will be used, plan to use that for stock arm cameras. The last section is PRC sixty-two. This is the small school signing bonus. The amount there is three thousand two hundred and thirty dollars of vote. The board voted on this small school signing bonus to give those individuals qualified five hundred dollar signing bonus. So this amount covers the bonuses and any social security associated with that. Five hundred dollars will also be added to that as the board voted, coming from love. We have to match that dollar for dollar. Okay, one last budget amendment to the state public school fund. We received fifty-six transportation. We received an additional twenty thousand and thirty dollars and plan to use that for gas and U C. Last budget amendment there for the state public school fund is for textbooks. We received an additional seven thousand one hundred and five dollars and plan to use that, of course, for textbooks. Any questions about state budget amendments on state public schools? Okay, next page, these are budget amendments to the federal fund. First section is PRC eighty-two, the sustained improvement. Received an additional six thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and cents. Plan to use a majority of that for workshop expense. Next section down is PRC one eighteen, this is special needs assistance. The allotment there is five thousand five hundred dollars and plan to use that of workshop expenses, supplies of materials. And then the last section is PRC one nineteen, this is for preschool part B. We received an additional three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and five cents. Plan to use that for workshop expense. The last page, these are budget amendments to fund eight, where we account for our grants. First budget amendment there is PRC five eighty-eight. This is a new grant. It's the C T E wheels grant. The amount budgeted for this year is one hundred and eighty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars. As you can see there, that's teacher salaries, some stipends, and we have seventy-five thousand budgeted for equipment. And then the last budget amendment is PRC six seventy-three. This is U N C suicide prevention grant, budget amount. Just for ten thousand dollars. Five thousand of that is an additional responsibility stipend to the person who oversees that grant. And also five thousand dollars for workshop expenses. Any questions about the budget?
Okay, go ahead with your fiscal year twenty-five local budget.
Cap it out. The next item again is our local budget request from the county. If you will, please turn to page three. The current year that we're in right now, the request that was honored by the county was the last line item on the page there is one million three hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. The last few years, the county has honored a seven and a half percent increase for their support of the school system. So we built our budget this year on adding another seven point five percent on this year's current budget. So that budget we've developed, the total is one million four hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. So if you go back to the first page now, I'll talk about some portions of this budget just briefly. So that you and folks that are present, see how these funds are being spent. First section there is local transportation. This is my three yellow buses. This is for district on vehicles. Total budget there is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Next section down is regular instruction. Majority of these funds are spent for coaching supplements and also rep re-expenses. Total there is two hundred thousand dollars. Next section down is for board of education, like there for board members and also board of DM is thirty thousand dollars. We'll go to the next page, the central office budget. That budget is two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And you can see items there, student accident insurance, legal fees, audit. There are software and printer supplies that we need, so the total on that budget is two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Next section down is the principal's office. The budget there is forty thousand dollars. We, we pay principal supplements out of this particular pot of units. We also pay, we have a lot in there for supplies and materials. Shouldn't they need some emergency supply of materials at the end of the year? Once they're state supplies that we've been allotted to the schools. Next section down is operation and plant. This is the biggest section of our local budget. It's got the social salaries in there, but most of it's operational expenditures, which would include electricity, propane, water, and telephones. And also property insurance. That budget, like I said, is four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Page three, we also have the maintenance section of our budget. That's three hundred and nine thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. A lot of that is budget for maintenance salaries, for supplies and materials, and also equipment. And then the last section of our local budget, local request from the county is other benefits, and that's forty-five thousand. And that, that is for workers compensation, unemployment share, insurance, and also life insurance. So again, the total budget request that we're making from the county from the local current expense is one million four hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Have they approved that yet?
No, we, we have to submit that to them. This goes to the county and then they make a decision no later than June thirtieth whether to offer this request or not. So next page, there are a couple of other pots of funding, one being fines and forfeiture, which we receive from the clerk of superior court. That budget is twenty thousand dollars and that's pretty close to what we receive from the clerk of superior court. Those items are used for workshop spending uniforms, saving, security supplies for our school resource officers. And then the last section, this is the timber receipts that we receive. The budget there is forty thousand, but for the last single years, we received a hundred and thirty thousand a year. When I first started as a finance officer, we used, we usually received around fourteen thousand. So I've always, when I present this budget, I've always budgeted conservatively. I don't want to budget higher than the actual revenues that we're going to get because we're spending money that we're not receiving. So we'll, we'll have hopes that next year we'll get another hundred and thirty thousand and I can revise this budget. Next page, this is the budget for impact aid. As you can see at the bottom there, that's six hundred thousand dollars. Last, last year, we received a little over one point one million. This year, we got, we got a payment from the U S Department of Education. And we've received another one point one billion for impact aid. I always like to budget conservatively on, on this pot of funding as well. I don't want to budget for more than what we're actually going to receive. As you can see, that, that budget takes the entire wave. We've got some wide items there for school treasurers. We've got instructional facilitators, technology facilitator, curriculum director, technology director. But when we revise this budget upward based on the actual revenues that we receive, a lot of these funds are used for operational type expenses. Because our electricity, water bills, propane, fuel for facilities, that, those items are very expensive. So when we expand, you know, the funds that the county has given to us, a lot of these expenditures follow over into impact and we make the expenditure in this pot of. So if you look at the bottom of this page, the total budget for fund two and fund eight is two million one hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. You can also look on the next page and the budget revenues balance for the next project expenditures. Now one more page. This, this last page, this is, this is a budget that's actually a capital needs budget. We currently have very few funds in capital outlet. We have approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars in a capital outlet account. And as you can see here, this is over a million dollars in capital needs that we have. The elementary school, I'll go through these quickly. We, we still need to replace the water main, restroom upgrades, classroom furniture, turnout, maybe just the cafeteria, floor tiles in the hallway, hallway to lower plate playground. That's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we've estimated. Next is the high school and middle school. We always have to replace carpet tiles, restroom upgrades, freon for the children's there, classroom furniture, mini splits that we need to replace. A restroom remodel and auxiliary gym, sound system for the auditorium, hands of gym, and science labs that need to be remodeled. So the total there is two hundred and twenty-one thousand. The last section there is district wide type of, you know, needs that we have. We have a maintenance truck we need to purchase. We need a large storage building. We have a security renovation that we want to do here at the central office. I'll skip the next one. It's the last that I'll talk, speak about. The last bullet there is grounds for the fields, maintenance person from the field who need to replace their truck. The next section up from that, this is additional renovations to the football stadium. And we've got, we've got a different cost for that. We're, we're going to be renting seats for the upcoming football season. We know that once that's over, we'll have seats that are going to be designed, manufactured, installed. It's going to be a big cost. We'll still have to move dirt on this facility to get ready for the permanent seating. So we sat down and estimated this, this could be greater than the V analogy. And there's a bullet right under that that's highlighted. I want to read this. And the county commissioners voted on this, made that one very clear. Funds for these renovations will be paid from G C S sales tax revenues. That's sales tax revenues for Grand County Schools. Statutory when sales tax revenues are sent to Raleigh, they also get distributed back to the individual county. There are formulas that determine how much of those sales tax stay with the county and how much goes to the school system. So the county's going to use our sales tax distributions to fund these outcome products. I just want to make that one very clear. So, but the total for the capital needs budget is one million four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
I make that clear to us at the meeting that we have to give them, they'll probably use that.
Yes, that's correct.
Mr. Green, I know that we have an audit once a year. Is that correct? And they bring this huge book and go through the important.
We, we do. We have, we have a fiscal audit every year. We have auditors, independent auditors that come in. They have tests, they pull samples to ensure that our financial statements are presented fair. And also ensure that there's no instances of non-compliance with state, federal, local, and grant regulations. These audits that we, that we, fiscal audits that we've had for the last eighteen years, all of our audits, as you know, it's clean audits, unmodified audits, with no instances of non-compliance. So we have that, those control procedures in place financially.
Okay, what about the state? Do they, what do they, do they ever?
In addition to that, what the state does is we, every month, we send them two reports. One report is a monthly financial report. That report sends to them our monthly revenues expenditures and our year-to-date revenues expenditures. The other report that we send is a payroll report. That payroll report is sent every month. It goes to the Department of Public Construction to their license salary division. They analyze those salaries and if we have any non-compliance, if we've overpaid or underpaid some of our individuals certified, we have certified and classified. But we have state mandated salary schedules and we have local salary schedules. If we have individuals that are not paid with those state mandated salary schedules, then we receive an audit, a salary audit exception. They list who that individual is, how much we've overpaid them or underpaid them. And we're required to correct it. If we don't, at the end of the fiscal year, if we've overpaid someone, then we have to reimburse the state out of our local funds. So there's checks and balances every month on our salaries.
So an example of that, sometimes at the beginning of the year and Christmas weekends. So, so at the beginning of the year, that, this is kind of long because all of our teachers that come in, they're provisionally certified, are all on that list until D P I licensure can get them through the process of, you know, either a supermat or permit to teach or whatever reasons, license and things. So typically, as you know, those, those go away. There are, those are the kind of things that would be on there, that we expect to be on there because we're waiting on the P I to process their applications.
But we're paying them, I'm hoping that they will complete the process for revenues, yes.
And have, and have. Then we can, we back, they back to their start date.
Yeah.
Just.
And once they review those qualifications, those individuals, and they let us know that what their catch-up pay is going to be, get their lack of salary that they shouldn't in our.
I've even had this discussion with your grade about hiring teachers that have a lot of educated salary schedule versus some that are on the lower scale, correct?
That's correct. And classroom teachers are certified employees and their, their salaries are more scrutinized than any salaries in the district. It's obvious that a twenty-five-year tenure teacher should be made more than a five-year. That's the approach that there's salary schedules take. So like I said, you know, we're, we have checks and balances every month, all year on the salaries that we pay.
I guess I was, when I, I was talking to the fact that when the board hires a teacher, whether they are a three-year teacher or a ten-year teacher or a ten-year certified teacher, then that, that pot of money is just kind of one pot, right?
Um, I'm, I'm, it's one pot of money.
One pot, but it affects that.
What happens is, is if you get a new teacher and you don't know what their qualifications are, they have not been turned in their licensure and salary. You're supposed to pay them to A zero. That's the minimum salary for a classroom teacher. As their qualifications get reviewed and approved, then we're not fine on what their salary should be based on those qualifications. We start paying them that salary from that point and then we catch them up to the salary that they should have been paid for how long.
So they're reimbursed is what, what you're saying?
May I say though, that we are at diversity on the study schedule or their, their personal schedule and determined when they can clear that. So we may issue or request to permit to teach, as Mr. Green was saying, and we may do that in August, but it may be December before that's cleared.
Okay.
We also have priority processing, which we are allowed to send them once a month to Carolyn Fisher, who is our regional consultant. And what she does is she allows us to earmark those individuals for critical. And we can turn those in up to five names each month, kind of first Friday of each month. And then she tries to go in and attempts to help us clear those some names and those licenses.
But that is just for our teachers.
Yes.
It's not so much that.
Yes. So we are at diversity to determine the time limit for when those are cleared.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Green? Thank you, Mr. Green. Facilities update. I'm sorry. Oh.
One on the budget.
One on the.
Neither budget.
Oh, I got it. I got it. I knew that. Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented by Mr. Green? So do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five local budget and capital outlay as presented by Mr. Green? Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Sorry about that. All right, facilities update. Mr. White.
Right. Back up and hit a couple of my other half before I get to facilities. As far as testing goes, I think principals have already mentioned that we're finishing up check-ins. Actually, the middle school is finished. I believe the elementary school will test some earlier this week and we'll continue to test some. uh, due to the rest of the week, maybe even right after spring break. Uh, now the high schools, they're finishing up, uh, some of their check-ins, uh, you know, here soon or right after spring break. So, so hopefully, as I, as I mentioned, you got four of those really, really good, uh, test results that we give back that teachers can use their classrooms to, uh, help identify the needs that they have at this current time. So I'm, I'm really enjoying, uh, those check-ins and I, I know the data that, that we're getting back is good stuff. Uh, another thing I wanted to mention real quick, I think Mr. Branson already mentioned this about the high school as far as the teacher working conditions are, as I wanted to commend our principals, uh, working all that to try to get those completed. I know the high school is a hundred percent complete. I know that elementary school has got every base that they possibly can get. Uh, we didn't have a couple of, they, or at the beginning of this, uh, window, we did have a couple of vacant positions at the time. And so we're, we're not going to get a hundred percent completion rate at, at the elementary school, just because of that. Uh, also at the, uh, middle school holder, what, what, one person, I believe we're looking for. Actually, no, there's three more on today. So we're better today than we were yesterday. So I want, I want to commend those. So that's good guys for all the hard work that they've done there. So, uh, but as far as facilities goes, as you recall, uh, last month's meeting, uh, you guys did love to proceed with the bleacher rentals, if I can get that word out. Uh, and you remember we had two different options. One option, uh, just bringing in bleachers for the football season. And a second option, I'm bringing in the bleachers earlier before we can use the stadium for, uh, graduations and ceremonies and baccalaureates. And so I remember you guys did choose to, to go, we're bringing in the bleachers early. Uh, so from there, it went to the board commissioners. And on March the eighth, uh, the board commissioners did vote to approve. And as Mr., uh, Green just mentioned there, they did vote to approve using sales tax monies to move forward with bleacher rentals, uh, uh, for the May through December, uh, period. Um, on March the twenty-seventh, uh, about a week ago, I guess, uh, Southeastern Seating did confirm receiving a fifty percent down payment, which is what they, they require. So they have, they have confirmed the receipt of that fifty percent down payment. And, uh, yesterday, uh, Jason Moreno did receive confirmation that the bleachers are on track to be installed on or before May twenty fifth. So we did have that confirmation. Uh, so that's kind of, you know, we're, we're out with the bleachers. Uh, now as far as the architects and the concept drawings and all that type of stuff, of course, we've not received any of that type of stuff yet. Uh, I do know that we have had surveyors, uh, down the properties, you know, the other part that was sent from, uh, the architect agency. And so I'm, I'm assuming they're, they're still working on those plans and they're probably going to be here for those soon. So that's about all.
Thank you, Mr. White. Okay. All right, Ms. Knight, legal counsel search process.
Yeah, so further resignation of your former board attorney, Ellen Davis. The board finds itself, uh, in the legal counsel search process. Um, I had asked, uh, if you had received, uh, your training session with the, uh, North Carolina School Board Association, some samples of the legal counsel, uh, R F Bs request for proposals. And, uh, I took the liberty of combining some of that because I sent that to you. You also have a copy in your, um, in your folder today. I had asked that you look at that, look at, see if there's revisions you would wish to make that, like all the things, start again. Um, your pleasure to the board, uh, but to give me some, uh, direction on that. Uh, particularly, I would like to look at time. Uh, there's a question on the back that if we were seeking proposals of that, the submission of the proposals, I would need to debate for that. And any comments, board of the bank, it's where you start this process.
A school resource officer program. No one is listed there. Is that you?
Yeah, we need to, we need to talk about this. We have to have a conversation about this. Y'all need.
Oh, about that? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes. So I'd like to know the board's comments about that point. Pass me to me. My understanding is that the school board association would also help us get this information out, um, to any eligible, uh, entities, firms or attorneys that would have interest in this and that you would, uh, go from, from that point. Certainly, the learning beginning, if you have a comment about the process in general, uh, we certainly entertain some information to be available.
As I said earlier, you've been a special client to us for years and years and, uh, it's been our pleasure to work with Miss Davis, uh, both for you and other various educational entities over the years. Um, and, uh, I personally liked her very much, thought we're on her. So, um, having, uh, and I want you all to think through what you can want to see in, in an attorney too, uh, when you want to see somebody who's local and in the county or next door or something. Um, uh, I think in R F B process, we'll certainly look at it to see if, if, uh, we think we, we can fulfill your needs. Um, it's, uh,
That's why they national, they're prior because I thought it might be of interest.
I appreciate that. Um, and, uh, that is something we need to, I need to talk to my partners about. We have a brand new associate trying to figure out some of what's, what our, our workload looks like coming up. Um, but, uh, at any rate, I, I'm happy to help out in that process any way we can. Legally, Judge Dean Chatley was so touched on that, that we'd help through our search process however we can. Uh, but I do think there's a chance we'll, we'll see if we can, uh, make a proposal to you. Uh, just to tell you briefly, we don't, um, we don't ask for any retainer because we just, we want to work it solely to the player or the department. We don't want you to feel like, you know, you're hooked into us for some, some amount of money that you've got to work out of us to then move along. Um, if it, if we are able to propose for you, um, we just want to kind of work on an hourly basis and you're all happy with us and then we're happy with you and then keep, uh, keep moving right along. Um, I realize too that you've got some disruption in, in the membership, membership on the board that may make you, uh, consider, you know, going on an interim basis for a little bit longer and I'm happy to continue to do that. But as I say, it's kind of, um, you know, whether we have a long-term relationship or not, it is a uh, convenience compared to everybody else that shaves a solid hour off of drive for me to be out in Franklin the night before your meeting and not just pop over here, uh, for a morning meeting. My wife would dearly love me to have another more, a morning meeting. It means I'm home to the house, get to bed, uh, often. But, uh, at any rate, I'm happy to answer any questions you've got.
So I would ask if once they have a full board seat, then what, what timeline would be appropriate? I mean, uh, you know, sixty days for request for.
Sixty or ninety days, something like that. Um, yeah, I think is, I think ninety is probably about what I would usually see. I don't know how, why your, you know, candidate list is going to be. You may not sort of like your, your superintendent search. You may not need quite that long. And, you know, there are boards that, that, um, for lots of different reasons, and not our clients, mainly because we don't want to be on that roller coaster all the time. And, and everybody does tend to stay with having this. Um, but there are some that roll over and we see boards, cabarists look do board council just about every couple of years or something. Um, so I say that to say, at least the way we do it, you shouldn't feel like you're, and it's an ethical obligation that attorney has anyway, not to make you feel beholden to the attorney. You're the client. We're supposed to do your work for you, not, not the other way around. So, um, yeah, I just, uh, at any rate, I, I think, I think probably sixty days would be, would be gracious funding. And I do think school boards association is effective in the way that they, they get those things out. We certainly see all the notices when they, when they send them.
Yes, and it's the draft that, uh, proposed to the board was taking the language from two or three. She, they gave four or five different boards and I just tried to combine it in terms of.
Yes, I guess what an attorney need to have, I mean, I, I read, I read this, um, you know, they all, they all specialize in something, but school law, I mean, school law.
I would certainly know that would be, you know, and I think that is safe in there as well.
I saw.
It says that an attorney or firm well versed in education law, that's first in its own purpose.
That going to be part of the time? Or do you, do you find that part of the time?
Well, um, and again, at risk of being the fox guard in the hen house, I mean, I'll tell you that, um, I started my, my career in representing school boards was in Bacon County Schools, which was the one I, I grew up through and graduated from and, uh, happened to be just lucky enough that, um, they were looking for a new attorney and I was six months out of law school and I raised my hand and said, yeah, I think I'm one of those. Check that diploma on the wall and say, I am one of those. I could be your attorney. Um, year after year, uh, it's just more and more to know. Uh, it just sort of seems to pile up and, and I don't want to say you couldn't find local counsel that would do plenty of good job. Uh, and, and again, we're here, if, if that's, if you don't end up with us, we, we, we help with local counsel who, you know, constantly. Not that I don't feel local, but, um, you know, you may not feel like all that local, if I'm national or, or popping over here from Frampton. Um, so, you know, it's not impossible. I think you're going to need to, should just see what they say. Um, and, and maybe there is somebody out there with, with a lot of background in it, I really don't. I wouldn't know that that would be, you know.
I really don't think you know until you get your, your R F P out there to see who you have apply, they would feel comfortable with maybe that qualification.
Right.
So would you, then when I'm second listen to you get a full board, is that what you would want to do?
What do you think, Mr. Carrington? Do you think we need to table it?
Forward.
Go forward.
That's, I'd give it forward.
Go forward. All right.
All right. So then, um, would, uh, then have the permission of the board to, uh, make the submission date within the ninety-day timeline?
Sure.
That, that we discussed.
How do we get that out? What, how do we?
On our website or? I mean, we'll, we'll certainly put it on our website and some social media, but I think your, your best bet is getting that out to the school board association, who is offering, which is a hell of a public process for you and within their realm of.
Do we need to get an approval of this? Give you a.
This is all we have. So I think we're good.
Move on.
Yep.
Can you be sure? Okay. Uh, high school resource officer program. What did I say? School resource officer program.
I didn't advise, I know because the board just requested that I put this on the April four agenda. We didn't pursue your discussion.
Who requested it? Go on there.
Uh, you, you all did last, the last meeting, you said you would have a meeting for a public discussion and then you come back and have a discussion out of that four weeks.
I think we just can't move it for the next meeting. I, personally, I think we ought to wait till we just say, say somebody.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Allison.
I'd like to entertain that we keep the SROs as it is and just continue the conversation of trying to change to the SROs. Given the fact I can't vote, give your name since I worked for SROs.
And legally speaking, Mr. Allison, I believe you can move, you don't have, I don't think you have a conflict of interest here. And it's something you don't have to. You can refuse yourself as a school board member and you're not compelled to vote. You don't have a, and, and so saying that you feel like you're conflicted and shouldn't vote, then you can choose not to.
Right.
Um, then that's, I just want to make clear, I think that you legally could vote for it because you don't have a conflict of interest in the state of North Carolina is very limited. You, it has to be that if you voted for something that was going to put money in your pocket or a spouse's pocket.
Yeah.
Uh, or you were going to get something of value out of it. It just happened to be your employer is not enough for a legal conflict. So you, you could vote.
Well, I still like to. So do that.
I think based on, I think based on the fact that we don't have another board member and based on the fact what we have from the input from, from the community, um, our school resource officer program, um, which I'm going to talk about, which I guess talk about the next, well, financial part of it. But I think the, well, I think the days of even with teachers and a lot of staff of being in education for a long period of time is over. I really do. I'm, I, that makes me a little bit nervous. But personally, I think we just don't even need to vote on this. We just go ahead and drop it. It seems to be the the will of the people and the will of the staff that they remain in the school.
Is that the same?
Excuse me?
Is that the same?
Did you hear that motion?
Is you got a motion? Is that the same? Kevin, you got a motion in the same. Any more discussion? All in favor and I can't vote.
Who made the second?
Um, Pam. Any opposed?
So we had all.
Yeah.
Thank you. One re, refusal? Did you vote? He made the motion.
He made the motion.
I think procedurally, you can make a motion that you don't end up voting for.
Okay.
So you, I think we do have to deal with if you're voting for it or against. At the same.
All right.
So which was it, Mr. Allison? I'm sorry. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, it's, it's.
You voted for the motion.
All right. Uh, I has been deleted. So Jay, school nursing program, SRO financial discussion.
Well, this, this was, uh, initially budget, budget decided was on several other agendas. And, uh, a request was made in November for this and in February, Mr. Green and, and all the board got everything that I've got up here because the board has everything. So you're welcome to take one of these. This was the first thing we got in our February packet. And then he first said that uh, continuity, I think is important. We talked a lot about that in public, a continuity, uh, school nurses, one, two, three, four, five, six, and eight. From, and this documentation that Mr. Green, uh, provided the board uh, was, uh, for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four school year, it was a total uh, of, of school resource officers, school nurses. So it had a total of their salaries, which really didn't tell us anything. Um, as far as, because some of these people coached and they did got, had different things. School resource officers, one, two, three, four in the last three years, one leaving, uh, and then, uh, coming back, of course. So this was, this was one and we had, uh, we had, I think continuity is important. Uh, we had Carly Odom over in the elementary. Of course, Kim Lovelace sunk there, but she's retired. Trudy Brackett, I guess, is in the high school. Karen Moody, uh, Tristan Hall, uh, Jessica Beasley came in as, as a, as a certified, but Karen Moody, Tristan Hall, Lisa Baer's, Erin T. Were classified and but back in December of twenty-one, we, we have, we, uh, announced two positions for school nurse, uh, to assist with COVID nineteen related school health issues. One position on each campus temporary grant funded through June thirtieth, June twenty-two. Uh, grant funded either at an hour leave range or, or grant funded. Uh, on this first document, I couldn't, in March, we got this, uh, Mr. Green gave us, gave us all this right here. But in, in between that, he gave, he gave all of us this tag, and you didn't bring it back. Other monthly, other monthly salaries of SOO officers and, uh, school nurses. And so, uh, per temporary, temporary positions and these were the grand, and I just guess clarification is needed, um, on this because. And I just guess clarification is needed, um, on this because, um, we have an hourly rate, hourly rate to assist with COVID, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, and that was the only, uh, vacancy announcement I had or, or we had that, that I know of. Um, with, with that vacancy, with, with that grant money, uh, we had, uh, not been a permanent position, but considered a temporary position, uh, eleven months, uh, Karen Moody with a salary of four thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars a month. Ten months, uh, Elizabeth Ayers, four thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven, and that was, uh, that, and then she, she apparently left and, and, uh, she apparently left to, for a permanent position because this was grant money. And Erin T came in at three thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars until five twenty-six, twenty-three of two thousand four hundred and one dollars and fifty-six cents. Um, and it's my understanding that, uh, Elizabeth Ayers and Erin T were, uh, this first sheet of papers that was given us in, in February, were paid out of codes that were COVID nineteen testing grant and answer funds. Um, uh, Karen Moody also paid out of some of that, but also exceptional children, behavioral support, non-instructural support, and small schools money, which is state money, uh, which comes out of state money. So I guess with continuity, because at this point, we do have, uh, didn't see, uh, Tristan Hall on this one right here, on this particular one right here. And I assume that she is, uh, over there, correct, in, in?
Not anymore.
Not anymore. She's not, so we have no, nothing in elementary.
No, we got, you have a, you hired a couple of months ago.
That's right, we did, but she's not on this one. She's not on this either.
We got the card.
Okay, since, since he probably gave us this, um, but, uh, these are, uh, well, anyhow, then, then we, you gave us this, of course, Carly Odom left, came back, left again. Uh, and lost her position. I've taken as head nurse, is that correct? Uh, yeah, as head nurse, and that went to Trudy Brackett. So Carly Odom was certified, uh, Trudy Brackett certified. Carly Odom at three thousand five hundred dollars monthly salary in twenty-two, twenty-three, three thousand nine hundred dollars, uh, in twenty-three and three thou- three thousand nine hundred dollars in twenty-four. Uh, Trudy Brackett, uh, fifty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars in twenty-two, five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars in twenty-three and five thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. And on the, uh, and, and I guess, uh, they're on this, uh, uh, registered nurses are on the state salary schedule, on the state salary schedule. Um, it's a little complicated, but there is a five hundred dollar supplement also with the certified nurses, uh, along with their salary. Uh, uh, with, with, with us, with the, uh, grant money, Karen Moody, Elizabeth Ayers, and Erin T, there was nobody over there. We still have Karen Moody, but we don't have anybody in elementary under that grant. Uh, but what you gave us here, what we got here was, they were being paid, the, the, the march that you gave us, uh, Mr. Green, Karen was being paid out of PRC six seventy-one eighty-one, which is COVID, they said in answer. And then, uh, there's nothing for elementary, uh, for Erin T, it's gone. Six seventy is gone, it is gone. And Karen Moody's, uh, went from twenty-two, four, one, six, seven, twenty-three, four thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars down to three thousand four hundred and forty. And I guess that's because of the six seventy dollars. Uh, and then not showing anything for elementary, I guess elementary, cause that's where they were for FY twenty-four.
Ms. Ma, can I ask you a question? What, I, I'm hearing what you're saying.
I kind of understand how we came to this, but how it was voted in?
And what, well, Mr. Dreaming is the only one that can answer that. And, uh, I, you know, I, I'm hearing who's talking, but I don't know what is following line.
What point are you trying to make? Because we explained, we explained earlier that all of these salaries are subject, okay, to licensure. We had a state mandated salary schedule, we had a local salary schedules. Um, the changes that you're seeing there, I mean, if you want to talk about a difference between what one nurse is getting paid as opposed to another.
No, I'm not.
We've got one nurse that's got eighteen years and that, the nurse you're talking about, I'm not naming any names. You're talking about names in open session of what their salary is. I don't think you should be doing that. But we've got legal counsel here that can say whether you can do that or not. I'm not comfortable with spending here in open session discussing people's salaries because the board goes into closed session to talk about personnel and property issues.
But, but it is public knowledge and it's.
People can't make a public records request. That's true. Whether it should be discussed in open session.
Well, I guess, I guess it's just coming out of figuring out why, why all the codes were so different on some of them. It was not all grant. So it's not all granted and we still have some in elementary. Probably still not have some in elementary.
Well, I don't know that I really didn't explain that because I'm not exactly sure what you're asking. But when you look at somebody that has seven codes by their name, and you're looking at three years, if that person served, what was this? You said this was a, a total summary of their salary. It can be that person served one day in an EC classroom out of PRC thirty-two, and that has pulled into this total. So that's how they would be out of thirty-two. I mean, PRC twenty-nine, perhaps they served one day as a substitute and they're a seven year pool. If you're that pool, their whole salaries, that would be, I would, that would be my explanation for that.
Can you, can you pull them and pay substitute pay because that did happen?
Well, you're talking about, you're, you're talking about from, from, no, but you're talking about twenty, FY twenty-two to twenty-four, and all of those codes are gonna get it. So if you're paid out of the P code and you're a, that's your primary job, they're not going to be from another P code to make you substitute base somewhere else. But that hasn't happened, has it, Mr. Green?
Let me, let me explain something very simple. The first nurse on the top of your document there, we'll scan across. That, that individual's paid out of PRC six fifteen and one oh nine, which is spent. Six fifteen is a, is a grant that we received. It's fifty thousand dollars a year. We've had multiple individuals paid from that grant. Fifty thousand dollars doesn't always pay a hundred percent of the salary benefits from that individual. So when those funds are expended, then we move them over to PRC one oh nine, which is rural and low income schools. We budget for that. So when we expend that fifty thousand dollars, that individual's pay gets switched over to PRC one oh nine. A good example, my, I'm paid out of PRC oh oh two, central office support. There's not enough funds in that lot to pay all of our central office directors. So most of us are paid seventy percent out of PRC oh oh two and then thirty percent paid out of impact aid. So that's why we move folks around because you've got, you've got separate program reporting codes where you expend the funds, but you have to keep personal staff and find somewhere else to pay them.
So if the job description doesn't change, what was your great to say of, there's no reason we can't change it to another code that supports that same purpose, Kevin?
That's correct.
A nursing code or a nurses, you know, assist that kind of thing, whatever code, and we know that for several reasons. I, I really don't understand what you're.
Well, I guess, I guess, I guess, uh, they, 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 we hired them as temporary COVID nurses, correct? And we had one on high school and one on elementary, which don't have the hospital.
No, so they're, they weren't hired as nurses. They were hired as.
As COVID, under the grant money.
They were not hired as nurses. They were hired as assistants and a nursery problem.
Right.
And so we, we hired two positions to start with. Uh, and then I think one person left, we hired another person to come in, that person didn't plan to.
But those, those individuals, two persons that were employed by the K twelve COVID testing grant. I think that's a terrible title for that because it's not what they were doing. But that grant supported the salary that we paid them. That was allowable in that grant. So there's, there shouldn't be no scrutiny about that.
Well, for how many years?
Until we have, until the grant ends.
So having been.
For the purpose, for their reason to be here.
Yes. So that original grant that was extended to us was only supposed to happen in a very short amount of months. Fortunately, at the end of that grant cycle, they reached back out to us and said, there's more money available and we would like to extend that. So that's the reason why it went into a second year. It was never supposed to have happened to begin with.
And the reason that we ended this year was because we still have COVID money, that there's very few things that fit that COVID bill. And responsibilities did not change in that position.
And thank goodness that we had it because we were allowed a school nurse on one of our campuses for much of the year so that nurse assistant was able to go back and forth between the campuses so we could be covered everywhere.
So the person that, so we have one person in this position right now that took on the responsible responsibility of two positions on both campuses.
I would say about a PRC one oh nine, that is grant funded also as a federal grant that is only written for nursing, uh, nursing aid. So that's the only way that those monies can be spent. PRC one, one oh nine.
That was the example I just came to you about, the individual on the top of that, of state or that, uh.
Right. I see that rural income. But, but what I'm saying, it, it disappeared over, it disappeared over in the entry because of the PRC six seventy, it's gone.
The, the, the job responsibility has not disappeared off of where you're getting that. So longer in the end, we continued into another grant who has the same purpose because that's for money is COVID money.
Okay. Uh, well, I'm just trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out why do we have same monies on, on one person and not on the others, I guess.
It just, it just explained it. Yeah, we just, I think we just need to trust Mr. Green because he has had a explaining record and.
And I'm not saying, I'm not saying that they're doing anything wrong. I'm just saying, um.
Mr. Green?
Yes. I'll address that, why we're paying someone out of state as opposed to, uh, federal or, or grant funds. These nurses are also certified employees, all right? Their salaries, if they're paid out of state funds, their salaries go into licensure and audit. Now those, PRC six and PRC seven, that's instructional support. We get a lot, they pay us by position for a number of months regardless of what those salaries are. So we would rather pay a nurse who has a high salary out of those state funds where their salary's been paid for by a number of months. Okay, or position, all right? Their salary may be higher than the average salary within that group. So we want to pay, we want to pay our high paid folks, and this is a general statement, like our classroom teachers. We want to pay those folks out of PRC oh oh one because they're paid for a number of positions regardless of what the salary benefits add up to. We also have classroom teachers who have lower salaries that we pay out of PRC nineteen, which is small schools, simple health funding. That is a dollar to allot. When you spend those funds, that's it. You don't have additional months of employment, additional position. Once you spend those funds, you're done. So we've always, uh, tried to pay our higher paid employees out of these state lots, whether paid by position or by months.
So we actually are gonna lose these temporary nursing positions.
At the end of this, that's right, yes, because COVID related positions and we have it till September thirtieth.
That's correct. Extend those funds.
Well, I think it, just, I, I gave the board this and you, Ms. Ma, were you saying, you said there was a committee that went to this, the toolkit?
Yes, we, we had a committee that went to the state training on the, uh, desert funding with the toolkit.
Well, I thought this was really good on page two, the purpose of it, to answer clear, which we are coming up on, of course. Uh, time to look at the tool, get the two piece designed systematically to support PSC bridge through the process of reviewing data, determining, uh, return on investment, answer investments. In other words, did, did it work in giving you this money? Were, uh, it explicitly is designed to support conversations and discussions between decision makers, including superiors, financial officers, the mentorship, the responsibility of reviewing data, determining, uh, if these worked, if, if we want to continue on with them. Is that my understanding?
When you, can then you all, you don't have to do that alone.
So yeah, I know, of course, there are things, but I'm saying, so if these programs were under SIR, then if we can find the money, we can continue those on, correct? Mr., Mr., uh, Carrington brought up a good point. We had our meeting with the, our county school board association. I have never been in a work session since I have been on the board and that is, that is, that is open to the public, the work session is. I think, I think if we ha, and I see online where a lot of school boards have work sessions, uh, which I think that gets you down to your, when they said there were some boards that met for twenty minutes or thirty minutes or whatever. I think the work sessions really can get more meetings down to a thing. And Mr. Carrington brought up a good point that at budget time, if the school board had a, if the school board had a working session, uh, it would be really good. You did make that comment, correct, Mr. Carrington?
Commented that, uh, if it were, I guess, eventually that, that I would suggest two a year.
Right, exactly.
But now one in the summer, because our budget services submitted, so that would not necessarily cover what you're saying. But I did mention two a year, one, one at mid-year and then one in the summer.
I think that would be, I think that'd be great.
But that was just my valid time. I better repeat that.
The board, can I reiterate something? The data that you receive every month that's collected from counselors, nurses, and social workers, it's given to you for that purpose. It's because that we knew these funds would, would be expired, that, that the funding would be here and it is, I mean, we're at that point. So every month when you get that data, that tracks those numbers from nurses, counselors, social workers, that's our way of publishing that to you so that when grant opportunities become available, we can request that and that, 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 those numbers have been shown to you, provided to you as proof and evidence and that we need funding to continue the programs that we've had going and for sustainability.
Yes. Mr. Green, let me ask you this. Um, uh, going as a, as a classroom staff and receiving, uh, your, 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 your pay, uh, and also as a classroom staff, is that, is that, shouldn't that be done? Receiving sub pay plus your regular pay.
Why would somebody be a sub if they're a full-time employee?
Doing anything else? I don't understand.
Well, it showed, it showed up on one of our, our.
It did, but you're talking about three fiscal years. So, so a couple of those people you're talking about were substitutes in Bacon County Schools before they were hired in a permanent position. So when you pull their salary, that code shows because they were paid sometime during a three-year period, probably before they were hired as a permanent employee. They were substituted.
This is showing, I, this was not permanent, uh, these are temporary.
Well, I mean, well, they were hired with.
It's showing on, it's showing on, it's showing on, uh, it's showing when they were hired as a temporary employee. It's showing that. And I have, you know.
Uh, no, I think this is.
I don't think you need to get with me anymore. We've discussed this for months.
Wow, we've discussed.
The reports that you received, the first report you received was forty-four pages of school resource officer nurses and what we call nurse assistants salaries. That, that encapsulated everything that they were paid over a three-year period. And you wanted that far south, which we did on the Excel spreadsheet, all right? And I gave you their monthly, uh, salary amount and that condensed that report. So you could look at only the school resource officer salaries, only the nurse salaries, and only the nursing assistant salaries. I tried to condense that for you and that's on one page.
Well, for the board, you gave it.
So, so the only reason I think people will be mailed the same code, the same label, if you work with a regular, you might work at after school code or you, or get some other program, they extended the time. I do have to show them a specific example, but I really don't understand any of this.
Now, now, now you can have, you have school resource officer, because they are not on our state salary schedule. School resource officer, correct?
They are paid out of state funds, out of PRC sixty-nine. That's what you mentioned at our last, okay, board meeting over at the high school and auditorium. You mentioned at our previous board meeting here, they are paid out of PRC sixty-nine. Their salary and benefits are paid out of that source of funding, and we pay for four and a half full-time positions out of that allotment. And that's, that's all we have available out of that allotment.
But it's not always out of PRC sixty-nine.
Yes, there's.
Yes, their, their salaries have, their salary, their full-time salary has been paid out of PRC sixty-nine as long as I've been.
Well, on this one right here, on this one.
I, I think we have beat this dead horse long enough.
I want to finish this.
Go ahead.
The one seventy-one, the one eighty-one, the eleven, that could very well be additional duties. That could be summer duties, that could be after school, oh oh nine, and some of those could be if you work the fall game, and you have reimbursement from, from that. I mean, so what you're looking at is, like we've said many times, a combination of ever paid yet that they've ever been paid for from salaries, from PRC sixty-nine.
Okay. Personnel, Ms. Knight?
Yes, I will be bringing to the board for your approval, uh, several names for the following positions. The very question, uh, transportation mechanic, some instructional substitutes, and the occupational therapist assistant.
Okay. Right. All right, and I have a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to the provision of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, Grant C. S. three, and one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, Grant C. C., I move that the Grand County Board of Education goes into closed session to receive advice from John Kennedy for the Grand County Board of Education, while the advice comes through the review of overturning white privilege. The advice will be general legal advice about legal issues or legal matters. Pursuant to the provision of General, North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, Grant C. C., I move that the Grand County Board of Education goes into closed session for the purposes considered personnel matters is defined and allowed by the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, Grant C. Eight, Grant C. Six, and the North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C dash three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We are now in closed session. All right, action items, Ms. Knight?
See, I would like to recommend a position, transportation mechanic, David Lovinggood.
Do I have a motion to approve David Lovinggood as a transportation mechanic?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
Like to recommend as instructional substitutes Lance Collins and Josiah Phillips.
Do I have a motion to approve Josiah Phillips and Lance Collins as instructional substitutes?
Salute.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay?
Like to recommend as an occupational therapist assistant, Leah Crowe.
To have a motion to approve Leah Crowe as an occupational specialist assistant.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Do you have anything else?
I do not have anything further.
All right. Do you have any announcements?
Yes. So I'll try to articulate this. There will be several meetings coming up, uh, on April sixteenth at two P M. There will be a special call meeting of the board, with the primary purpose is to potentially seat a new board member. And also to refine any questions for the superintendent interview process. Additionally, on May sixth, the board will meet in a special call meeting in closed session to interview candidates for superintendent. I, I will note that there will be, uh, hopefully the vacancy announcement for superintendent will go out by the end of the week. And the deadline for applications will be May first. So then the interviews will be May sixth. And well, if you need to know, they may start at seven thirty at morning, right? So, uh, and then, uh, May seventh will be the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All in favor? We'll post it here. We're adjourned.